Evening and welcome. The regular meeting of the Richmond Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Board wishes to take a moment to acknowledge the passing of John Coker after a long battle with cancer. John was the high school football varsity coach for 10 years. Our thoughts and prayers go out to his family. He will be greatly missed and forever remembered as Coker Strong. Bridgette, our mission statement, please.
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide equality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community.
Mrs. Shuboy, roll call, please.
Deborah Michonne.
I am attending virtually from Columbus Township, St. Clair County, Michigan.
Thank you. Angela Pacito.
I am attending virtually from Richmond City, Macomb County, Michigan.
I am attending virtually Casco Township, Michigan, St. Clair County. Kyle Simmons.
Virtually attending City of Richmond, Macomb County.
Danielle Sutton.
Virtually attending City, Casco and St. Clair County.
Thank you. Margaret Talto.
Attending virtually City of Richmond, Macomb County, Michigan.
Thank you. And Sheri Zubey.
Attending virtually in Casco Township, St. Clair County, Michigan.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Mrs. Shuboy. At this time, I am looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
I motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Do I have a support?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda items. Anyone?
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the consent agenda as presented in the attached documentation.
Do I have a support for this?
Support.
Mr. Walmsley, any discussion?
You're muted, Brian.
Thank you. We have a resignation that we were submitted by Mr. Paxson, the girls varsity basketball coach. We have a recommendation to hire Dylan or Brendan Dolan and James Virgin for the seventh grade boys basketball coach. That is not correct, the seventh grade. Oh, yes, the second, seventh and eighth grade boys basketball coaches, James Virgin. There was no questions on any of the other items, minutes or the accounts payable.
Any questions from the Board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, Mr. Walmsley, we have a presentation. I'm sorry, we have bond update.
Just to give the Board and the viewing audience, this past weekend, the Board Office moved out of the middle school and we are in the temporary trailers behind the middle school. You see, that's where I'm at right now. Last weekend, we moved the weight room at the middle school and the art room relocated them in the building as well as the Title I room. And they have already started on the new middle school office and new secure vestibule entrance. So that is well underway. This week, they would have, actually last week, I believe Friday, all the heating, rooftop heating units were delivered at Lee Elementary School. So if you were out there in the morning dropping your student off, the timing was a little rough with the contractors, but we got through it. So all of those are delivered and they are in the process of installing those on the roof as well as the new unit in the addition classroom. So we are well underway. Over spring break, we will be doing the asbestos abatement in the high school, basically the 200 hallway, where the new robotics wing will be. And we will also be doing asbestos abatement in the hallway outside of the middle school art room and where the new weight room will be in the middle school, as well as some smaller areas in the main office and the tech room throughout the building. So we also are planning on installing, if everything goes well in timeline, the new cafeteria floor at Lee Elementary School. We're going to hold off doing the gym floor till the summer, but the new floor for the cafeteria, that has already been painted and the new lights have already been added in the cafeteria, so that will be starting to get its finishing touches. So there's a lot of work going on and you see the three semi-trailers in the parking lot. That's just a sneak preview of what's to come. That is where we are storing the stuff that we are moving out of the buildings. We've moved excess chairs and like the robotics and excess stuff from our office and so forth into those areas. So that we will begin storing all the stuff from the district at the end of the school year. So there will probably be all 50 of those in that student parking lot filled with all of the stuff we have to empty out of the building. And finally, the last thing that they're also planning on doing during spring break is the stage. And the walls of the stage, the black walls will be painted. I don't think they, they might not have been painted since it was originally done, but the stage will have, will be painted, restained. The front part of the stage and the actual stage we painted black, so we are moving ahead.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Walmsley? Okay, now we have our presentation for this evening.
Hi, good evening. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. All right. Well, thank you so much. Today, we're going to be going into our literacy achievements and celebrations of Reading Month. The weather is really nice today and it's the longest month we have of instruction in the school year and it's just a wonderful time. We have lots of great activities going on and we have our data back from our winter NWA score. So we're just going to be taking a look at some of the achievements that we've been able to have. These are the school improvement goals for ELA. They are on all of our school improvement plans posted on our website. You can see the 72% of all students will demonstrate proficiency in evidence-based reading literacy in English Language Arts at the high school. 60% of all students will demonstrate proficiency in reading, writing, speaking, and listening in ELA at the middle school. And 70% of all kindergarten first, second, and third grade will demonstrate a proficiency in reading at the elementary. This is our elementary fall 19 to fall 20 data. I think it's important to look at this to be able to see the growth and a lot of some of the impacts of the pandemic in the subject of literacy. You can see that the bar is the actual growth that was made in each of the grade levels and the diamond is the grade level norms projected growth by NWA. Keep in mind that they change their norms every five years typically. And when they set the 2020 norms, this was not in anticipation of a pandemic. So keep that in mind that you can see that this was the projected growth and the actual growth from fall to fall. So you can see that we made lots of growth at the elementary level. We were almost proficient at the first grade level where they met that goal, but you can still see that we have some areas to grow in our, in our spring. Do we have any questions about the elementary level?
Just important to highlight what Renee said is this is fall to fall. So you have to remember on, on March 13th, we shut down in-person instruction last year. So March, April, May, and a little bit in June, we did not do any face-to-face instruction with students. So we anticipated a loss in, in decline. I'm proud that it's not as bad as I thought it was going to be. So it does speak volumes to what we were able to accomplish.
Yes, absolutely. And countywide, we're definitely above average of where our peers are. So here is our middle school. I keep having to move around the pictures. So you can see that the actual growth that was made, some grade levels made more growth than others. And this is the projected growth, once again, not anticipating a pandemic. Also, looking at grade seven, I want to point out that fall 2020, this SD stands for standard deviation. And what that means is when you have a range of scores, you have a high end and you have a low end and that standard deviation is all the points in between. So there's larger gaps in ability in grade seven. So you can see the importance of having that differentiated instruction and our tiered literacy to be able to be able to address those needs that we're seeing in those upper grades. Any questions about middle schools' fall to fall? And here is our high school. Fall to fall. So they made great growth and they were able to hit a lot of the projected targets outlined by NWA. We don't have M-step data to review tonight because obviously it was not taken last spring. So this is just, keep in mind, the NWA just measures growth and not proficiency. And we're going to take a look because it's important to recognize the growth that we've been able to make this school year from fall to winter. So you can see here at the elementary level, this is the actual growth that was made and this was the anticipatory set outlined by the norms of 2020 from NWA. Once again, this was not anticipating the pandemic. But you can see that there was growth made in all of the grade levels at elementary. And noticing that our standard deviation is highest in grade three.
Renee, can I just ask? It's fall, so that fall was when school started and then the winter 2021 would have been just recently or when? Date, date to date, I guess is what?
It would have been September and it would have been January.
Okay, thank you.
And I think just a reminder, what Renee said regarding third grade, when you look at that standard deviation, there is a lot of differences in our kids. And that's again with that focus on differentiation, it really has to help target that instruction to, to get us to meet that goal.
And here is our middle school fall to winter growth. We can see that several of our grade levels got very close and if not meeting the projected growth, projected growth for the 2020 norms. Once again, noticing that we have higher standard deviations in grade seven as well as, as grade six. Not to mention the NWA, some of the differences in four to five, when they get to grade six, they start taking the NWA six through 12 assessment. So that's also very important to note, that a lot of these kids have not experienced that before. And we do have our, our PSAT September 2020 summary data. And I don't know how I can, here we go. So ninth grade, ERW stands for evidence-based reading and writing. And you can see the range of scores and you can see the 63% met the ERW benchmark in grade nine, which is great because their goal is 72% to be proficient by the end of the year. So the fact that our fall summary is already 63%, keep in mind how many months we were out. This is really fantastic. Grade 10, same thing, the mean ERW score was 447 and 59% had met their ERW benchmark. And grade 11, 61% has met their ERW benchmark. Any questions?
Did, did virtual students do this as well?
They were, you're not allowed to take the PSAT virtually. So if they did, they would have to come in, very similarly to the spring assessments we're about to have. We're going to be able to invite families in to take those high-stakes testing, but they cannot be taken virtually.
So did we have any virtual students come in and take them?
Mrs. Talto, I can answer that. Yeah, we absolutely, we invited all of our virtual students come in. And just off the top of my head, we had less than a handful that elected not to come in. I want to say under five in the entire school that were able to test and not come in.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Here is our SAT September 2020 summary. So you can see the M-step from 2019. Keep in mind that we just have adopted Michigan, new Michigan state standards for social studies. So there is a two-year accountability grace because they need baseline data. So this won't quite go on our accountability until the next following year because they exempted the schools from last year. So the, you might ask why the blue bar and the green bar are the same data? And it's because this is actually the screenshot from College Board. And this is really for school districts that have multiple high schools to see their average and then particular schools. So you can see that the M-step social studies, what I do want to draw your attention to is how Richmond stacked up compared to the state, which you can see that we are above in all categories for M-step social studies, evidence-based reading and writing for the SAT and in mathematics, even though this is literacy-based, but it's still a great accomplishment. Any questions? So overall, this is the fall to winter RIT growth. And you can see that the gray bar is fall and the blue bar is winter. So pretty much majority of every single grade has made overall RIT growth improvement from fall to winter. So this academic school year, we are showing growth. And just an outline of some literacy supports in place. You can read here that the Richmond High School, we have different courses for students that need the extra support that might be academically a little bit behind in literacy, as well as the differentiated courses for the higher-end students so that we are tailoring to all types of literacy learners. And Literacy for Life is a specific class to help them enrich them more of an intervention. Richmond Middle School, the AARI Reading Intervention Course, which is ran through the Macomb County for the Adolescent Accelerated Reading Initiative. We have our SSR program, which is Sustained Silent Reading, which is also going to be an emphasis for Reading Month. And at Lee, we have the LLI program, which is the FONTS and PENNEL, the Level of Literacy Intervention Course and the small group instruction for, for our struggling learners. So like I said, this is a really exciting month for Richmond and just all across the nation. It, March is Reading Month and it's just so wonderful and I just, I love literacy. So we have so many great and wonderful events happening at Richmond. You can see that we have a calendar here. We have our March Madness themed events happening. We have virtual book fairs happening. There's a lot of excitement happening and we all need it and the kids are just loving it and eating it all up. So you guys can read here, because I won't read all these, but you guys can go ahead and take a moment and read some of the wonderful activities that we have going on at each of the levels. And this year, our Richmond Literacy Ambassador is going to be Rhonda LaGroys. And she is here tonight, so we'd like to congratulate her for being recommended as our Richmond Literacy Ambassador. And if you'd like to just say a few words, Rhonda, congratulations.
Hello, everyone. Yes, thank you. I'm quite honored and surprised by this. But I have to say that I do love the opportunity that's been given to me to just share my love for reading with the kids of our community. So, thank you.
Congratulations.
Renee, would you explain this literacy ambassador I always knew this year from the county level?
Yes, so Macomb Reads was a brand-new initiative for last year, started with Macomb County. And what they wanted to do is really highlight individuals from the district that is the epitome of that love of reading, to be able to spread that joy as well as being able to attend county meetings, getting some great literacy work and connections and being able to spread that back to our district and being able to work at all different levels and spread that kind of, the literacy initiatives from the Macomb County.
Are you sure? Were you sure?
I'm sorry, what?
Somebody's not muted.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you, Rhonda, for being here tonight. Congratulations.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Thanks, Rhonda.
Thank you, Rhonda.
And also, very exciting news. So part of March is Reading Month. In partnership with the Lois Wagner Memorial Public Library and Macomb County Libraries, we are proud to offer every Richmond student a virtual library card and access to digital text this year. And this is an initiative as part of Macomb County and their libraries. And it works with just their student IDs. Letters to Families will be going out this week to letting them know about this wonderful initiative. It works just like a, you know, a hard copy library card. You're able to go in, you just type in your student number and you're able to check out virtual texts, audio texts, as well as magazine subscriptions. And it's just a great way to bring equity and access to all of our students during this time since we can't really go out a lot, right? So this is really just a really wonderful partnership and we're very excited to be one of the few Macomb County districts that is going to do this. So congratulations.
Very cool.
Thanks. And this is the presentation.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? We're all good? I just want to say that I read all day today at Lee Elementary School and it was, it was really a great experience. It was a lot of fun. I enjoyed myself. Okay, if we have no questions for Renee, we're going to move on to our public comments section. Any member of the public may address the Board at this time. Please state your name and you will have three minutes to address the Board. Are there any public comments? I do not see any raised hands. Mr. Walmsley, do you see anybody?
I do not.
Okay, there being no public comments, we will move on to our superintendent's and legislative update.
Okay, I'll start off with the district. Just a reminder, this week is kindergarten and preschool roundup. It is a virtual session. There will be a presentation by Mrs. Ara and Eric, excuse me, and Mr. Koshen and Mrs. Napier regarding the kindergarten and preschool. We will also have on the website a virtual tour of the building since we won't be able to do that for our incoming kindergartner, as well as launching our online registration. And I believe we already have 30 families that have already started the online registration process. So the link is there that they can go on and click on and upload the documents. And you know, when you get to, it's basically a five-step process. You do a pre-enrollment. Once you do that, you will get a confirmation email that you've been, it's been successful, that you are, that we know you have an interest and part of that is to deal with spam and people trying to put false information in. Once it's been accepted, you will then get an email that will say how to log in and create a parent portal. If you already have a parent portal, maybe you might have a elementary or middle school or high school student and you're now registering your kindergartner, you can access your current parent portal and add a student. You will fill out the forms online. And then at the end, it will pop up a scheduling, much like we just did with our conferences for the fall at the middle school and then the, the conferences we just did at the elementary, middle, and high school, where the parent will be able to choose a time that they can come in and turn in the appropriate documentations to finalize the process when it, when it fits into their schedule. And as people choose their times, they come off so that we don't double-book, if you will. So we're excited about this process and we're excited to welcome the, the class of, what is it, 2034, 2035, and 2036. It's pretty exciting, so. Second, I will go on a legislative update. Last week, the legislators passed a budget. However, there's a lot of the, the federal stimulus dollars that were passed in December that were allocated in the budget that have some strings tied to the governor agreeing to certain things. So if the budget passes as is, for Richmond, it's approximately, I think it's about $700,000 of one-time money that we would look in, that would help us continue a lot of the initiatives we have this year going into next year, as well as doing some technology updates that we need. Some of those grade levels that we weren't able to replace laptops, we would be able to replace laptops and do some technology purchases with that. That's about it on the legislative front. I just want to do two clarifications. A couple of weeks ago, I spoke about virtual learning in the district. And I just want to make sure I'm, I'm clear. It is, it is not necessarily the district's intent that we become a virtual district. That is not what, what our expertise is in at the moment. But I was complimenting staff on having really not done virtual learning. The, what they have accomplished, they should be very proud. They have done an outstanding job. They have, they have really stepped up to the plate in this time of pandemic and trying to figure out how we can educate kids through all of this. And you have, as you guys know, we have people who, their beliefs are on opposite ends of the spectrum and we're trying to educate all of them. So I was just complimentary of the staff. There was no way my intent that, that it was to lead anybody to believe that we're going to continue down the virtual path for the next several years. This was a one-time, a one-year agreement with the REA. And I just want to make sure that, you know, they, they have been completely supportive of the district through this process and, and keeping and retaining our students. And as I mentioned, at a previous board member, we were the only Macomb County public school that got more, has more kids this year than we had last year. And that says something about our staff and our teachers and what we're able to offer. Is it the best system? No, we can always improve on it. However, I am, I am extremely proud of what our staff has done. So you know, we'll have to begin in the next couple of weeks, having the conversation about what do we do next year if we do this virtual? Where are we going to be at instruction-wise from the state? Are we going to still be in the similar situation that we're in today or will things change? But that was not my intention to lead anybody to believe that it's an automatic. I will involve the right players sitting at the table to, to think through what's in the best interest of Richmond. The second thing I'd like to just clarify is there was a newspaper article that published that I was in favor of, that we were planning on testing all kids in the fall. And I referenced a conversation that I was part of among all And I referenced a conversation that I was part of among all superintendents in Macomb County, that these are some of the thoughts that, that the federal and state level are thinking. First and foremost, I am not supportive of testing every student as they walk in the door with some mouth or nasal swab. Number one, we're not health experts, we're educators. And this isn't, this isn't our, our, our area of expertise. Number two, logistically, it is impossible. I mean, if you think about it, if it takes you a minute to do it and you've got 500 kids walking in the high school or 500 kids walking in the we're going to be testing for the first couple of hours of school and getting those results. It's just, it's just not physically possible. My intent of saying that was to get not only the board, but also the listening audience to reach out to our legislators and get involved in the laws that are being passed. And that are affecting how we operate here. I think as our plan, we have the best plan. It's not perfect, but it is the best one that our kids have had the most instruction and the most opportunity, trying to create as much normalcy for our students as possible. And I am so thankful that our staff have been very supportive. You've heard on the news that in some districts, they have teachers who they don't even have teachers to go teach in-person instruction. We have some districts that have not been in person since last March. Richmond has not been like that. And it's been a cooperative effort for all groups, sitting down and figuring this out and seeing what we can do in the best interest of our community. So I just want to clarify, I am not in support of that. I will, I will have, I have let my voice known with our legislators, or some of our legislators, they haven't gotten through all of them yet. And regarding our position, if that's something they are even thinking of, I think it should be in the local district's control in terms of what they can manage and accomplish and, and, and do in determining their plans. So I just wanted to clarify on those two points. I think it was the Times Herald article that, that reported that we worked out, we are not, if we were, I would be bringing this to the board if we have some mandate or edict that we have that comes down so that we can discuss it together. But I was, it was the intent of just informing people that these are the conversations that are happening at the state and federal level. And if you are not active, we need to be. In 1994, when Proposal Eight passed, local control was taken away. All these decisions should be made at the local level with the local school board. So get active in your, in your community if you aren't already. So with that, that's all I have, Mrs. Shon.
Thank you.
Or anybody else?
Okay, at this time, are there any items of interest from the school board?
I have something. I went and read at Lee on Friday. And I just want to thank the teachers that invited me. The kids were awesome. It's, it was nice to be back in the building and they are doing a phenomenal job, both the teachers and the students. So I just wanted to thank everyone. I enjoyed myself.
Anyone else from the board that have, has a comment?
Mrs. Shon? You and I had a conversation and I just want to put out there to what Brian said, I believe the article was the Voice Newspaper. And I believe you're going to say some things yourself, Mrs. Shon, but the Voice Newspaper is notorious for making Richmond schools look bad. They have done it for years. And so it's this kind of reporting that hurts us, it kills us. And that newspaper is a rag and people are misquoted. And people are allowed to make comments on social media. There was whatever individual man or woman who called themselves the Romeo Rambler, who basically rambled on about our district, called Mr. Wamsley a communist and just ridiculous stuff. So I just encourage people out there, staff included, listen when you're at the meetings, listen to what is being said. Mr. Wamsley has an obligation to this board to give us information to keep us updated. So we know things that are going on. Listen to what he is saying and listen to the decisions this board is making. Don't take what you hear in the, at the water cooler, social media, whatever, because nine times out of 10, it's bull crap. That's it. I think you're muted, Deb.
Thank you, Margaret. Anyone else from the board? I just want to reiterate what both Mr. Wamsley and Mr. Ms. Talto said, that all that we ask is that if you have some question, please call Mr. Wamsley or get ahold of one of us and don't assume what you're seeing in the paper. I was also quoted in that same article in The Voice. They asked me about all the new improvements and how excited I was. And there's a line in there that looks like we have no security at all going into our middle school, which I want to clarify is not correct. We do have a buzzer system, we do have a camera system. We do actually have, because of COVID, someone sitting at the door. So I just, please make sure that if you are seeing something, even what's in the paper, that if you, if you don't think it's correct, either view our meetings online or please call and check with one of us. We just want to get the right message out. And we are working really hard as a board to make sure that message is being sent out properly. Thank you. I don't, anybody else at this point? Okay, for those in the audience, we are going to be going into three separate closed sessions per our agenda. We have two discipline and one negotiation. We will be coming out of each one and then going back into it. We will only be coming out in our action items for two, for the two discipline. So I'm really not sure that, you know, if you, we're not really covering anything new or anything different that we will be sharing with the public. At this time, we will, I need a motion. I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session.
Pursuant to Section 8B of Michigan Open Meeting Act, and upon the request of the student's parents, I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of conducting a hearing to consider the discipline of a student whose identity is known as student
Do I have, thank you. Is there any discussion for this item? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we will go into closed session at 7:41 for a student discipline hearing. Okay, we're all back. Do I need to give a time? 11:37, we're back in open session. Okay, I, at this time, I'm looking for a motion for our student 030821-A.
Okay, I motion that the, following a closed session student discipline hearing, the board votes to expel student 030821-A consistent with the attached resolution.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Who is the second on that? I'm sorry.
Danielle.
Danielle, thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I'm looking for a motion for student discipline, student 030821-B.
I motion that following a closed session, student discipline hearing, the board votes to expel student 030821-B consistent with the attached resolution.
Support? Someone?
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. There being no other business, we are adjourning at 11:38. I just want to thank everybody tonight. I know this was a long meeting.
Thank you.
Have a great night.